Good evening, everybody. Uh, my first question again is the public hearing for the non-fresh grocery store. Thank you, thank you.
It's my second, so I'm excited. Uh, visiting the town, my name is Mike, and I'm from the ground, so I can say in the fashion issue for the board, uh, I have to know what is the general opinion for the public hearing comments. Um, so the study is located on New York City, which is in the United Park, which is essentially the two of the roads. Um, and what you have is essentially the original question about how could, um, the site then be the best flower site? And since then, the reason that changed to, um, lighted, which is a non-fresh, and of course, there were so many done, this particular, in the sense that it was capture all the existing conditions around the site, um, of which, uh, they're all existing conditions building, uh, there are no alterations proposed for the site other than to relocate more stretch of park space just to make sure that there are room for, um, box shop, char rides, and all the, uh, to the, uh, to the rest of the, uh, the site. Um, we have our four more consideration, all the important notes of the project, uh, the product, uh, the product, nothing to take in his own requirements, provide a sign for the signs actually not there in front of the room. Um, that's essentially some of the things that we require to install, so I'm very simple possible, so. But if the board has any questions, you may pick it up for the public hearing. I do love that answer.
My favorite question right here is, can you pack the general company, will you?
No, there's nothing. They're, they're all operating with the box shops. As a matter of fact, uh, prior approval, I would need, um, and I took on those notes and I placed it under general notice of, uh, of this particular project, that anybody is looking to, if, if, if the owner or the board is looking to utilize anything larger, essentially a box shop, that's informed, and it is a demonstration that an access site can be usable to the town, uh, prior to that. If we need that still. We have a general opinion, let's say.
If we have, like, wholesale or bring down? Or just still for bring down?
Yes, it's wholesale, not, not fresh grocery, wholesale.
And how many parks?
If you look at the parking table we have, and we have a total of twenty-two parking spaces, we have, and we need to acquire a parking shop.
I have another question.
All right, let's open it up to the public. Now, anyone on the public, any comments or any questions about this topic? Do you want to vote into the first one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
On the favor?
Aye.
All, all say aye. All the way here?
Aye.
Thank you. We're gonna, this could be a type-two action?
It takes us far as, you know.
Because it's an existing building, and it's not really affecting the, uh, um, so do we need a vote for that?
A vote? Well, it's, we already attacked around the last time, it possibly be unlisted, so, uh, for reflection, it was the three classifieds act, so I think we just move by the public.
Okay, now, do I have a vote for, or a type-two action?
Aye.
I make a motion to highly change respect to. Do I have a vote?
At second.
On the favor?
Aye.
All right.
Is, not necessarily zero, or just after that, is there a, 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 a speed limit for a, you know, solution, or is it open? Uh, I don't think there's anything else, but, uh, okay, yeah.
My question, you wish to approve it?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, you got it. Thank you. I accept. One favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for talking, man. I'm ready.
Okay, next on the agenda is Shop 600, uh, Gately. Good evening, chairman, board members. Would you like me to summarize since, since the last month?
Yeah.
Since our first report, the board last month planned, so they had our change, much of all, we added a note, we wanted, uh, indoor stores, we didn't control any products, we added a line to the bulk requirements, indicating that the maximum building core ten to ten thousand square feet, over the gross of six thousand six hundred, and, uh, there's some updates to the parking policies. We've also included a cost estimate that the board consider for, uh, special needs, and some of the response to the bulk requirements.
Do you have any other comments?
Uh, no, we just go through these comments. We did have, there was a question, uh, you, you made reference in the narrative about speaking to someone in the D O T, do you, do you have whom you want to help with?
Yes, with Mike Frass, who I should visit the site, and I submitted a revised, uh... There, or, or, that, that, that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you, so.
No, I also even, I sent Christina a copy of the, of the slides, something.
Right. If, now, when you review, do you get cost estimate, and, uh, apparently satisfactory, uh, we can't, we can't explore percent of the cost estimate for inspection, because we're going to, uh, at such high, uh, uh, that we can approve, we'll not refer that to the town board to take a, 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 and any approvals would be conditioned on D O T, uh, at the time for, uh, answers.
Okay, very good.
The, 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 just needs to, the public to kind of watch.
Yes, we, uh, so we, uh, there's a question about, this, uh, we saw a correction, a consent statement, uh, I don't know, but, uh, so do I have a motion for, uh, make that?
I'll make, I'll make a motion for negative declaration.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
I, I have a motion for, uh, your slide approval?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I have a, opposed?
Opposed, negative.
Yeah?
Have any yeses to the, uh?
Um, two, three, four, four yeses.
Four, we, yes.
No, three, yes, or, one, two, three, four yeses.
Yes, or four, we, yes, uh, two, yeah, yeah. And, uh, so it'd be additional, uh, due to such, we get that memo, we get products for, I mean, eight to fifteen, and, uh, it's also based on the D O T.
Right, D O T, permanent, and, uh, fees, all, uh, yes.
Got it, thank you. Next one, everybody.
Congratulations.
Yes, go celebrate. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the Patrol's Marcelino on Ninety-four, uh, St. Orleans. Kingston, I'm just not last one. Um, we submitted a, uh, a, 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 uh, and we advised, uh, asked for a comment on that board. We added on sheet number three, as requested by the, uh, county, uh, park, county, part of the planning, uh, trees available, and then we submitted a improvement cost estimate to the, uh, town engineer. And it's, um, very good.
Do you have any comments? Yeah, the, uh, can I just go through these comments, uh, and find out if concerns they need to be granted to the site, the architectural pool? I reviewed the plus estimate, uh, it's, uh, the, the, same thing, we take four percent off the, the town board, and then, uh, approval would be subject to the D O T, because it would be an affirmative permit, and then the, uh, it's not whole thing, it would be.
Okay, uh, so what do you give your super manager?
Uh, yes, you are the agency, so if we're at the secret, I have a recommendation for make a deck.
I'm sorry, can you, I'm sorry, can you, please just hear your check, it's not, it's not.
You heard for just, so there's no outside agencies, or, and you, you, uh, you take, well, yeah, you play yourself in the agency, and you can do your secret act.
Very good, what's supposed to be the?
I'll make a motion for the board to be agency.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, and, uh, do I have a motion for, make a, make a, make a deck?
I'll make a motion for a, for a negative declaration.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, which may come on the D O T.
And a few, please.
And a few.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Of the two of side numbers?
Thank you, chairman.
Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Uh, next on the agenda is three oh seven Museum Building Road. Uh, if you're expanding the existing building, if you're, uh, warehouse.
Hi, Harry, I'm, I'm here with the Alan, and he's here in progress. Uh, we're actually addressing the three oh, uh, three oh seven Museum Building Road, and we're sort of going through a lot of the comments and such on that stuff. We're actually trying to aim for, kind of determine the leades, the seeker, hopefully for the planning board on that, as well as trying to go for a public, you know, set for a public hearing. We're going through the comments as provided by that, uh, town engineer, providing a couple of points, sort of work, sort of a little bit of a done, and certain, they were already incorporated into the plans, and the certain decision that we have provided fairly recently. Uh, looking at different points going down, uh, one of the areas that was also considered, I can invite to the existing site, our setup of thirty-four point six, where the variance at thirty-five feet, so we're wondering about that, what do they say, discrepancy come up with that, whether we have to adjust to our proposed building, to align at thirty-six point four, uh, thirty-four point six, or to thirty-five, either way, the current ruling on, and adjust accordingly on that, uh, just going in and down the points, so we're here. Well, there was actually mention of O N R, uh, utility, he has been, uh, there was a mention here about a letter from April first, twenty twenty-two, that was for a previous applicant, that was not us. Our previous discussion, but I could say, probably say within, higher on January of this year, we found that earlier, there's, in that ballpark, we've already sent the plans to them through review, so far we've been, uh, uh, and they've actually been approving a lot of stuff that we've been looking at. The, the submission actually has been sent to them already, so I think you sort of go through a little bit more of a, fine teeth comb, if you will, but overall, there was a safety that might have been, so, just want to make sure that that was there, because it was a different path, uh. So, chapter two, court, landscaping, as well as, uh, driveway permit, those items will be addressed to the engineer, we already actually have it submitted, and we're sort of waiting for the results back. With the tree survey, purchasing trees with eight inches or above, we're actually still a process of getting that tree survey, and we will try to test accordingly, with a limited disturbance and so on, as much as we can change to preserve some of the trees that are in the area, which we're moving around there. Again, that's gonna be something that we're gonna look into a little bit further on that. Uh, emergency access for, let's say, a fire truck, we'll be doing that truck turning. Uh, there was a concern over here in regards to the ridgeline overlay district, and how it actually has limitation on it for twenty-five feet for building height, however, that primarily only affects the R L zone, we are in the O R I zone, which is office, research, and industrial, so therefore, we're still technically staying at the thirty-five feet rather than the twenty-five for an R L zone.
Yeah, I don't know about that, I'll, I'll have to check that, but I believe the ridgeline applies for all zones, not just...
When we were, ended up looking it up, we ended up noticing it was only for the R L zone, but if there's other information on that, I'm glad I could get it, this is a very, uh...
Just a little bit, you would apply it just in the R L zone, and not to the, not to the emergency zone?
Uh, that's the way it was mentioned, I guess, but I don't know for, for fact, I have to double check again.
Well, R L is some over, it's not a zone, it's some over the district, the R I zoning district, the ridgeline overlay is, in fact, all the districts, all the zone divisions, R C one, R C two, uh, O R I, so just, just clarify.
All right, I'll, that's, I'll do a little bit more. Uh, try to building envelope on the plan, so I'll do the depth of our layout, you can see the building right on there.
No, I want to see building envelope, uh, dash line.
Oh, okay, I see.
See everything.
All right, so a little bit more about building specified on that, which is gonna correlate the architectural drawings when they're actually completed.
Uh, you don't need any, you just offset, you know, it's twenty-five, uh, twenty-five to the side yard, you show twenty-five, you show dash line, intersect your front yard, intersect your rear yard, and inside yard, and it gives you the whole area, you're allowed to help.
Well, we actually have that, that whole setback on the layout plan.
You, you show a setback, you build it, and I'll see the envelope.
Okay.
Building, with a building envelope?
Yes.
And the subject design, we're gonna try to go a little bit further in detail with it, with the town engineer on that one, like, we mentioned it with the last part, which is architectural, blocking, and that worked on, but our goal, like, is maybe for, maybe to a seeker on that one, for the new board, and for, to make it for a public hearing.
Do you have any comments?
Uh, well, you, you, say, I'm here? I'm here?
Yes.
You do have an envelope, uh?
Yes.
I, I, it's actually, it's on scene one oh three.
Yep.
Uh, Tom, I was basically, uh, my overall, my comments, uh, the two big items are the, uh, just the D B A, you know, uh, they had that, uh, survey done, and, uh, it was thirty-four six, and, and not thirty-five, so it's, really, I don't know, I don't think anybody wants to put a four tenths of a job in a building, I mean, it's, well, they're going before the D B A, and, uh, it's modified to the existing building, and, uh, uh, again, the O one on one issue, um, they have the verbal, verbals are nice, but, you know, we need to write it on, 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 and, and, and.
Totally understandable.
And then, uh, the D B A wished planning to work to handle the seeker, the next step would be for this board to declare their intent to D B A to start a certification process, and then, uh, we have thirty days, you can follow the comments.
Sounds all good to me, so far, just waiting for the rest of it.
Do you have a weapon, a swine, uh?
Uh, I don't, where are you wearing weapons on this particular parcel? I think there's some in the nearby parcels, but I don't believe with us specifically, because I believe there's one that's sort of like, much further down, I think, across the way, there's, I'm not, that's, you might want to count this into the list. I'll have to verify, we'll see.
He says, uh, who should tell me that? Someone. Make a weapon, who should hear that? Same as, uh...
Okay.
What's the, on your floor, do you have any weapon, guys?
Well, we can all keep people enough, and I can probably add a couple of them.
Uh, do the other side comments to the board?
So, to the, uh, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh...
Yes. Do I have a motion to declare us, and to the agency?
I'll make a motion to the intent to declare the agency.
All favor?
Aye.
Her, 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 this has a, was that, uh?
Uh, I'm sorry, send the, uh, chance?
And I'll lose it back?
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Are we shut up for the public hearing for the next session, or?
Uh, yeah.
That's a lot of asking.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, I'm sorry.
I don't know, I think, Steve, I think we're gonna be staying home, uh, fine, until we, uh...
We're waiting for, uh, for the other side lines, or?
We have to do revision to the O R.
Okay, O R, all right, I want to do one more. Set the next, well, our chairman for pre-submission, address all the comments, hopefully we have a, an O R letter.
Okay.
Then as the next law, if anybody has an issue, we can tell the agency, and then, uh, then we decide, also, if they have modified your D B A application, move along with that, purchase order, and that, until you, uh, you're having an, uh, okay.
You have the public hearing, uh, through, yeah?
You could, but you can't, you can't act until...
Sorry, I got confused there, first, I, what was that?
Cancel, uh, pre-submission.
Okay.
Address all the comments, and then, uh, I don't see why you can't proceed back to the D B A.
Yeah.
You just gotta decide, you know, you might have to modify your application.
Okay.
Is, we're, we're pre-submission right now?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll stay at pre-submission.
Yeah, we're not, we're, uh, public area.
So, hopefully, I'll, I'll, we'll be, uh...
Right. Unless you want to wait till after the D B A's interrogation.
No, no, you have a seeker, so we'll seek the public hearing anyway.
Yes, we do, we, 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 you, 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 uh, no, we're, you can start that review, and, sorry, can, get it, just to the end, but you just can't act until we're done with the, with seeker, if we've been, uh, determined, okay? Did you get all that?
So, it's a, the, depending what actually gets, do the seeker, is, on that one, that N D B A, so we got us to hold off a little bit on anything about the determination for seeker's whole stuff.
Right. It's, 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 D B A knows, it, 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 it,[1482.92]
Good evening, everyone, my name is Chris Crystal, I'm an engineer at Lakeview Poly, uh, and I'm representing the Museum Road volunteer and meal support. Uh, the applicant is seeking to build a sixty-seven hundred square foot building. Uh, what makes this declaration unique is that the intended use is not listed in the town zoning, and therefore, a special use permit is required from the town board, so the applicant has been in front of the town board, um, the town board actually declared lead, lead agency, and, um, however, we still need to get site plan from, from the planning board, and that's what we're discussing today. Um, at this point, we just have a sketch plan, and I received Mr. Brady's comments, uh, generally, he's looking for more information for developed, uh, site plans. I don't have any issues with Mr. Brady's comments, we're looking forward to a complete submission with further developed site plans. If the board has any questions about, uh, specific design, or would like me to go into more detail, then you can actually do that this time, otherwise, the applicant is looking to move forward with the planning board process, schedule public hearing.
Any, any comments?
No, I'm just looking to address Alex's comments, and, and, you want to read through your comments? Uh, sure. The applicant is appearing for pre-submission conference, uh, preparatory to seeking approval for a proposed annual station. Uh, proposed use requires special use permit by town board, the town board is acting on the special use permit, and is the lead agency for seeker purposes. Uh, explaining about conforming with the town zoning regulations, section two thirty-five, thirty-three, quote unquote, three, and then fifty-five, C, one, two, Q. Uh, some general comments, they need the town approval box, for the utility plan, plan profile for roadway, access needed for agreement for shared roadway, lighting landscaping plan, soil loading control plan, and, uh, necessary so, so, construction details, uh, engineers approve the cost estimate, entrance group, uh, require a DOT permit. Um, there was a question on whether it's gonna be on the town side, because of the easements or the handling, so, we'll just have to figure out who's applying for.
Sure, maybe, I'll reach out for more information, it's mine, saying that the, um, access drive is not a part of this application, that's the town parcel, and I believe that they're working on part of the DOT, but on the wire, and, uh, hopefully we'll have some more information for the next meeting.
I think as long as the necessary easements are in place, that, you know, the board could.
Unless.
Make a decision on it, and then naturally, uh, we want to see the perp test, we want to make this perp, and then the architectural information, you know, floor plan, uh, rendering, or elevation, or, his colors, materials, the wall.
So at this time, I actually do have a packet with, um, some similar architectures that, uh, could be used for, I don't know if you want to pass it around, or.
Just to make a complete submission.
I'd say, we'll do it.
And then, uh, so, uh, what you should do is, uh, uh, seeker being handled by the town board, will give the public hearing for site plan, so, I would recommend you have a site plan for, uh, September, do I have a motion to, uh, the public hearing, uh, September?
I'll make a motion for the public hearing in September.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you, not opposed, but, was, turn off, I know it's on EAF, uh, number sixteen, concerned that we're gonna work, uh, in the store discharge, affecting the GAs property, however, you know, beneficial, this is the community, I'm in favor, I don't know, this is dark, or I'm saying, I just, I'm just concerned, you're in the flood zone, hundred year flood plain, and you're indicating on EAF, that it will affect, it would be normal, it will affect, you know, the profits. So, I think that's something that you should emphasize, how that's gonna be, how it's gonna be, I don't expect.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, we'll, we'll look into that, yeah, I think, definitely, we're close again.
And I'm sure you will, just that, you have a good question, like, to keep on.
Understood, thank you.
Alright, so, sixteen hundred EAF.
Got it.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, I would like to. Uh, no questions at this time, we're looking forward to, you know, having a lovely hearing with the full submission. Thank you, thank you very much.
Chris, I, oh, I have soil erosion, and, and the soil erosion, I'll just, I'll, it's running.
Excuse me?
On the soil erosion control plan, and, you know, we need a range.
Okay, got it. Sounds good, thank you very much.